Started, welcome. We have a special call meeting. Today's October 27th, year 2020. It's four o'clock in the afternoon. So we can start a little late. We're pretty appreciative of you all being here today. This meeting is no different than our board meeting. You can start the same. So we're going to have a couple of things. We'll have a prayer. Our chief will come out and he'll lead us in a prayer for commissioners, a commissioner prayer. And then after that, we're going to have a place for commissioners that will be on the table together.
Honored to be my son and the next to me. Thank you for that. Lord, thank you for the grace of your day. Thank you for this day. Bless this with your word. We thank for our county commissioners and the work they do here in one county. We thank for the preparation they have made for this meeting today and all the work they do behind the scenes that many people don't know that much about. We thank you for the work they do for you, give them wisdom. Thank you today, this meeting today, Lord. Thank you for your blessings. Jesus name. Amen.
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 I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America
and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we need to let, we can leave, let it every time. About a second and a half behind. Seriously, we're, I think we'll have you leave until you get back in here.
I know. There's, there's always that gap.
All right. Well, again, welcome. Calls for order. Chaplain Taylor, thank you for being here. I know what you're, your regular duty. We do appreciate you. Uh, we have an agenda in front of us. Commissioners, please. Okay, yeah, yeah. All right, we've got a motion, Craig, second, Jim. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
And then we'll move ahead with item number one received from the bid results for phase two construction solutions.
Give us attention. Are you welcome?
Thanks, sir. If you're going to pull this up for us here. Mike Maguire. Thank you, April. All right. So we had bid date was originally the 19th. We only got, well, we received two bidders. Had a third bidder who just talked to him just a couple of days before. He was still in and then decided, no, they're just not going to. So we had to re-advertise for bid, put that out for the seven day minimum, got it all back in and got it in paper. Got it advertised for seven day minimum. Got our bid back and date today. At the same two bidders, uh, bid law allows us to accept only two bids once you read bid. All right, ready? April, do I have control of flipping pages or does that do it?
Yes, sir. I'll sit here if you might give me a moment.
Okay. All right. I don't mind doing it. All right. So we had two bids today. One from South Coa and one from Vertex, which were both Salisbury firms. Base bid, the 20 to two, Vertex was the lower 53,000. South Coa, 68400. This was a very different type of bid because of all different small pieces that were added in. Plus, we, we listed, at the request of the county, listed nine different alternates so that they could decide to accept and not accept a piece. We're not going to spend all the money. Just trying to keep it flexible as possible for them. Um, so in the, in the end, uh, we can accept all the alternatives. We did not accept number three and number nine. Our final, our final total price in South Coa was 893,400 and Vertex was 570 and $27. So apparently the bidder is obviously Vertex Construction. So that, um.
I was curious, did they, and they already bid it?
The two of them both showed up at the first bid and both showed up at the second bid.
Did the bids change at all?
We are not allowed to open the first bid, so we can't even open the first one. So I don't know. So I guess the action we need from you guys today is whether to accept this bid. Uh, I do have a next bid, the third phase that we'll talk about right after this case.
Any questions then for?
Thanks. We have a motion to accept bid for Vertex.
I will respect. Craig, a motion. Jim, second. Any other discussion? Can all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Should we clarify that that being included all of them?
Included all the alternatives except for three and nine. And we'll talk about those. This nine was cubicles that was not going to be done. Three of temperature scan, all that temperature scan tunnels. Um, and we're actually bidding those as the third phase so that we can get competitive bids on those or 10 to. Um, and that, that bid is, has been advertised and what, why I want to talk to you about it today. So total price is 570,027.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that it doesn't include that. Basically, it's something. I'll make a bid motion to, to accept the bid for Vertex with all the alternatives successfully and nine.
Second.
Yeah, second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Moving into the next case here. That's the bid, if you want to see this. It's temperature tunnel check. Um, and it's all this is the, there were four locations that were discussed to have these on that temperature tunnel, uh, pieces. Um, this is, this specific one is one the counties look at. It's been built by Integra here in Salisbury. Uh, we are putting this out for competitive bid. Um, but the, the way system works is this little tunnel that they have set up, you walk in, it checks your temperature, gives you a green light or red light. Um, very similar to, you know, a metal detector or something. You have to walk through. Um, another couple pictures of how it looks and works, the locations. Uh, we have one, we have two of them at the courthouse. Um, one near the, the main front entry of the old courthouse piece. That's that guy. And one, uh, over on the jail side. Uh, this is the upper courtyard area off of Litter Street, Litter Street entry. Uh, and this is where that texture check would go then into the conveyors and things that we got. Actually, the face two that you just approved. So that's where those go. So wanted to, um, present this as a bid to you guys so we can put this piece out for bid, receive bids on that, yes. And those should come in. Uh, those could come in November 5th, which is a week from tomorrow.
And they'll be able to accept that bid and put these in place by December 30th?
Yes, sir. That is, that is part of the requirements of the bid is they have to be in place by December 30th.
And they do that without phase one being done? I mean.
Bid is independent of the rest of the work. Yeah. Yeah. So we, I actually have had conversations with Integra here in town to make sure that they could perform this. And they, their timeline is four to six weeks.
What do you, what do you estimate the cost for four units?
Cost for those four units roughly from what we saw from them from an early quote, um, plus some for doing a little bit of labor, the downwork, just to get to it, was $35,000 each. And what we talked about today, there are four potential locations that were requested. There are two, those are the two that I just showed you that are the most important locations. The other two were one at DSS and one at the Health Department. Um, and we had in our, in today's bid, we had either, weren't either accepting a temperature tunnel layer or doing a kiosk station with somebody who's behind a piece of glass and had a workstation. So that's what we decided during our meeting earlier today was to just look at two of these and do kiosks at the DSS and Health Department.
You know what, maybe it's required on which, uh, temperature tunnel?
I do not.
Can we find that out?
Can.
I went down, I went down and looked at the neighbor and basically, uh, what's required of it is on an annual basis, uh, scanner, scans, the records of the, uh, the, their part of your house have to be sent off to a location in California, the only location for calibration. These, uh, sensor scanners are only manufactured by two firms and they are in Canada. So, uh, everything else other than the scanners themselves will be manufactured here in Salisbury if that is the group that is selected to be used in the bid process. But, uh, those eye scanners do not have to be calibrated. So while that's being sent to California back, they'll have to use handheld sensor.
Is there, is there a way or do you know, I'm just asking, um, that you could have and quote spare so that when that comes out, what will do with it? You'll have to re-calibrate it?
We didn't ask that question, but I'm sure that it is because someone's going to have to take that into account. I'm sure it will, but I don't, I don't know the cost of that or that. That's, from what I'm seeing, that's the majority of the cost of that system.
Pete, can we find that out? Because you could actually have a spare replacement while that was being recalibrated. So we don't lose the service on the machines?
We could. The, the other alternative, since we're doing two of them there, that, that just a center complex is when one is down, they can route people through the other. So, so they never take both of them at the same time. What they actually could move was we have a location in Frederickburg. But I can find out.
I'm just praying the traffic jam that creates because you can prevent your courthouse. It gets, it gets pretty busy.
Yeah. And, and right now, the main street entrance is closed and has been for quite a while. Um, that's one of the locations that we're going to put one of these. So if, if they had to go back to closing the Wayne Street entrance while the one at the Litter Street entrance was down, move that one over, that's, that's a possibility.
Yes. Well, I'd like to have some kind of game plan that if we move all the cameras, that's okay with you.
So. This. We're saying we're going to just pray right now. Even after it goes over, we're going to check it.
That was the request, yes.
Is that, that what society is going to do now?
I don't know. That's just an architect.
In the next meeting, Pete, if you don't know. I got the same question.
My, my question is $140,000 or? Does this require somebody to man this?
There will always have to be somebody to man it. Just if the light turns red, somebody has to say, turn around and go away.
So after this issue, one is that we receive, to start out, we gotta add another person, maybe one, maybe two?
Not another person. Right now, you have somebody there, um, doing temperature checks manually.
Okay.
So this would actually make that person's job, um, you would need less manpower to do that piece.
Less manpower to do what?
Uh, it takes longer for one person to manually check everybody than it would just have people walk through the scanner and only have both people that you have to.
Do you say this is the, not eliminate a person there, it's just he or she might have too much work to do or, you know, go further.
I don't know if they are, if they have a. The, so the times that I've been in the courthouse area to, to go in and measure things, there's always been at least two decades there. Sometimes there's three, um, depending on how busy things are. Um, I don't know if that would completely reduce one person there or not.
But I would think that somebody would have to be here as long as the courthouse does. Doesn't mean you have to go and contact. So be there if they come in, so.
Which, which is the case now. At least one person is always there.
Yeah.
This, this was a request that we got from them to, to look at adding this temperature, all that temperature check.
So, um, Ken, so do you need us to approve going to bid for these? But it doesn't mean that we have to go through with it.
No, this is not exciting.
And we can, we can now and then, I'm not, I'm not sold on this. $140,000 to buy a lot of temperature. Maybe we're all, maybe, um, some of us live in love, I'm only hoping in a year, you know, we, we live in a better time.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm looking at the long-term cost of this thing, not just we'll get this machine and then it'll be paid for. Then we've got the personnel on the mountain. Really paying anything for personnel we do, just, and, and then decide?
Let's go ahead and, and I mean, I'll, I'll approve, uh, I mean, I'll, I'll, like, I vote to go bid and then we can just get some additional information.
I'll make a bid.
Also. Any other discussion? All the favors say aye.
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 Thank you, Judy. All right, um, consider access agreement for Perkins.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Pete.
Commissioner, thank you. Um, so we decided to accept a lease agreement with Perkins restaurant for the okay, any space? And just following our real estate procedures for long-term leases. Um, what we need in front of you today is just a motion approval for staff to run the notice of our intent. We'll publish a notice of our intent to enter into the lease with the general terms in it. Um, we will have under December 7th, agenda, uh, resolution and a lease to be approved at that time. But in the meantime, um, what we thought we would do is consider an access agreement for Perkins to go ahead and get into the restaurant, start cleaning up, getting equipment set up, and train their staff. They don't intend, I think, to open up to public until January. Um, and so the timeframe fits that we could go ahead and let them have access to the building, get cleaned up and start training, doing some other stuff until December 7th, we can approve the lease. That would take effect, December 8th. We would pro, pro-rate them on December 7th and we'd start four months in January.
January is a possible that we can get them, one, one, just one, I know, just in case something happens. I think we can certainly suggest that we, I mean, we can, that's.
I mean, I, I just think if we get in there, something happened to them financially and they said, oh, we can't do it. And they get in there and dealing with all the equipment and this kind of stuff. So I don't know. So I think based on the conversation today, I'm not sure if there's anything wrong with that. Yeah.
We wouldn't certainly check, check.
Yeah. I mean, it's done before, the state, it's, they don't just, at some skin at the end, they start to get the lease.
I would have anticipated it being run because I think they were ready to start leasing it. So we really given them a month's free rent.
Yeah.
Because they're just paying the pasta.
Right.
Well, they signed a contract. They're responsible. They aren't fully given six months as far as waiting that. They still have a contract of whatever number of years that they leased them. Jim, I'm just curious, so, so there must be a public notice?
Thirty days.
So what does, so what does that, like upset bid type?
Yeah, it's not an upset bid. Uh, like in most states, it's an upset bid. Uh, this is just a public notice of intent to enter into the lease, just so you publish it. Because we're not selling, it's just kind of a lighter version of that public notice. It says we intend to enter into this lease and these are the general terms of the lease. Um, presumably if people have any comments, they would send them. I don't know all you guys, but we're kind of public here. We just adopt the resolution of, then the lease could be. Essentially, most of the stuff we do is short term. Um, and, and so most of us like a year and it just rolls over for another year. Uh, so we're kind of just staying in short-term leases. Um, and so it's, it's been a while since I've had, kind of, a real substantial of that. So just taking a step back and follow it back.
So you need a motion to, um?
To, one, one motion to, uh, to approve, to ask to have to run a public notice of intent. Um, and then the second motion would be to consider approving the access. So to, this is the commission period.
I'll make the motion that we ask to have to run the notice again. Second, break a second, discussion on that. All the favors say aye.
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 And, uh, second, the second motion.
Are you on top of it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make the vote into we agreed to access with a one-month security deposit. On, you're accepting access to the bid.
Aye. All the favors say aye.
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 All right. Thank you. Uh, should I have added another item before we go here? Been discussing.
If you, if you want to put that there, we are still ready, um, we can, I'll take it.
Do we need to add that and vote on it?
Are you taking action or just receiving information? I think you take the opportunity to receive information. We're, we're restricted on what we can do because it's a special need. If we're going to change the agenda.
Yeah, we're not taking any action. Uh, we, we'd love to hear this, this update on our funding for our COVID project going on around the county, municipalities in the county, Jim.
Everyone should have. And, and just as the introduction, this microphone is not working.
All right. So talk loudly.
And, and one reason is because this is directly tied to the end of the decision.
April, do we have another?
He can sit here. I don't have a monitor here.
All right. Okay. You hear me?
Okay.
Well, well.
Hear me now? Great. All right. So what you had in front of you, what's on the screen is our current expenses. We have, on the left-hand side is the original budget. Uh, we have current expenses through September. We'll get October's in there this week. Um, a total, what we forecasted with the directors and with the new phase two construction of 570, uh, what we think that's going to be total expenses for the whole project, and we have variance on the right. So in a nutshell, we went to page three on the bottom with the new, with the phase two coming in at 570,000. We are projecting that we would be short spending all the money by 130,000. Now, that does not include the tunnel scanners. So if you purchase that, those, those, the white, those, that got alone. Um, can we go through it line by line if you guys want to, if anyone has any questions? Um, you can see we're in construction. We're going to not spend about 460,000 with, with what the bids came in. Um, employees with COVID-related work, we're going to spend an extra 404,000 that we originally planned. So that's kind of how this spreadsheet looks and works.
So we're under on capital.
Yes, sir.
We're over on staff.
Yes, sir.
And the difference is 130,000.
Yeah. And if you go to page two, you can see some more of that with it. What we're projecting for the testing, what we're starting to do with the warm bits, we're going to spend an extra 348,000 with may go that what we originally estimate, what we're originally budgeted. Uh, but we also put in 435,000, hired 11 additional folks, nurses, interpreters for the Health Department. We only have five in so far. So we're only projecting, we're going to spend 61,000 of that. So they have to offset each other.
What was the, what was the budget number?
435, 435 options.
For the nurses?
Yes, sir.
You think you only spent 60,000?
Well, right now, we only have five in. Um, in talking to HR, there's no new people in wanting to hire. So we're just being conservative that right now with, you know, even if we were to hire some, somebody today, they probably start to be November. So you're talking six weeks salary.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Jim, I got a couple of questions and Aaron too. Um, okay. So this nurse situation, it was my understanding that that was in the regular budget because we had all those, uh, open positions. So you're telling me that these are all new now?
That is my understanding that this group approved 11 additional staff members. Nurses and interpreters to help with COVID-19.
Yes, interpreters. Um, but the, uh, the Health Department had, I don't know, Aaron, maybe you remember how many openings that they had that, that the director had not filled that were paid for in the last budget.
I made a mistake about looking at the 435 for view and additional staff.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, but I think, uh, the board commissioners approved that.
Okay. Then, um, another question I have, Jim, is has the Health Department requested any more of the, or EMS, the, um, to purchase more Narcan? COVID-19 has basically, um, shot our substance abuse numbers up by another 50%. So, um, we had talked about getting more Narcan because it is so expensive. And what we've got right now is only going to last us a couple of months.
I can definitely reach out to Dean Charles Maston.
No, I'm asking you if they have come.
They have not.
All right. Aaron, Aaron, have they talked to you about it?
I, I seem to recall a, a conversation around that, however.
So ultimately, my question is, is are we going to have money left to pay for it or are we down to zero now?
Well, it, the, the first, the first thing is I'm, I'm not sure whether or not Narcan, it would be, um,
an eligible expenditure for the CRF funding. We we could certainly ask the uh um school government and the North Carolina um Pro whether or not that can be approved, but.
Well. I mean, COVID is the driving force for, you know, that that cost and and the increase in um substance abuse using. So, I mean, I think we can write whatever you gotta write for the COVID thing to uh cover that because that's that's being talked about all over.
I will certainly look into that. We will send an email to the North Carolina Pro Office asking if that would be a reversible expense.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, in a spot, one more thing. And as far as testing goes, um we really need to uh look at another six months. Um, I'm I'm estimating that we're gonna have to be testing at least through the end of June for our fiscal year. And I'm not sure that we've got enough of that um ordered. I know we don't have it on hand.
Jim, how much additional did you say you already put to test it?
I, oh, I don't know what the numbers are right now, but at the last health board meeting, um it was uh discussed that that we only had that much testing equipment or not equipment, but the tests available at this point. That that's what I believe I heard. But maybe that's another thing that Aaron can just uh or Jim can touch uh base with with Nina.
Have you mentioned in your comments there was an increased funding we have set aside for testing? How much was it?
So originally it was with Mako and company doing some of the testing is two hundred twelve thousand dollars originally. Um, we are projecting that in October, November, we're spending about a hundred twenty thousand dollars a month now.
Yeah.
Um, we think we'll spend about five hundred sixty thousand dollars on testing by December.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yeah, they they picked up the testing. It's it's really good. So over their original budget, it's it's three hundred thousand.
Okay, now you're talking, the budget you're talking about now is the CRF budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And not health boards budget that we passed earlier in the summer.
That is correct. This is the CRF budget.
So. If all this money has to be spent by December thirty first, we can't took money away from testing for employees that are going to be working actively since the third Thursday.
No, not not at this time.
Aaron, are we able to purchase the tests and um you know, like ahead or does it have to be absolutely used by the end of December?
And it 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 has to be, um, and I don't I don't know if Randy is on the call. Um, but the last offer, it it has to be encumbered, um, and the goods have to be received.
Okay.
So insofar as the test, the way I would interpret that is, you know, that money can only be spent for those that tested on or before um the date that the money has to be spent. So in other words, you couldn't pay for 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 tests that have not been administered yet. Um, as far as the service goes, but now if we we were to buy a testing machine, um or, you know, in the case of the uh temperature machine, of course, we can continue to use that after the money's expired. But the actual goods or services have to be procured um and received uh before the deadline.
And Aaron, this is Randy. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, what what you're saying is is the same I've heard as well. Uh, and I do know that emergency services and the health department are looking at those Abbott rapid test machines. But at this to uh at this point, they're still being released only to hospitals and federal agencies at this point. Um, so they are looking at that. And of course, there are funds outside of CRF um that are still under the CARES Act that may have less restrictions that could potentially be used as well. But yeah, as far as Mako um and doing the testing there, it would basically be paying for services up until that December thirty first date.
Okay, thanks.
Sir, I'm looking at uh at the breakdown here. Yeah, but uh so one point six million for general government, seven hundred thousand for general human resources. Up to far by seven eighty three thousand, four hundred sixty six thousand for communication technology, for services appearing at eighty six thousand. The DSS is thirteen thousand. They're in good shape or is it just not a big worker? Why they're such a disparity?
That that's a good question. Uh, I think when this was originally done, there was other grant ways that they could use and were using for some of their supplies and some of their equipment and information. Um, Aaron, I don't know if we've got.
Anything additional?
The the only thing I would add is there's been lots of versions and lots of requests, but um some of the requests, um, for example, the direct COVID nineteen pay expenses and then the related F M L A sick pay. Uh, some of the construction fees are, you know, likely good DSS too. Um, it's just the the stuff in the health department appears to be stuff, um, you know, specific tools um that they requested, but you know, other than that, that that's that's time.
We we've got another meeting Monday night or Monday afternoon. Um is are these numbers changing daily?
Yes, sir.
Where we can get an update from you on Monday?
Yes, sir.
I I think I think what we're all concerned about, that we all have our least one item. Are are these funds have been provided for us and we don't spend them, they go back?
Mm-hmm.
And that would be tragic. So uh the problem is a lot of these items are construction related and may not be completed until right up to the deadline. And so we're uh we may not know until eleven fifty eight what we have or we don't have. And that's just a real challenge. So between now and the end of the year, can we just attribute them? Even if there needs to be times where we have a special call meeting or where you call the commissioners or certainly talking with Aaron every day, we just make sure we really got our come on this. And I say that we all understand what's happening here. Aaron's doing a good job. Uh, uh, we don't want to, we don't want any of it.
Yeah.
We don't have to, so we just don't want any surprises when the clock strikes and strikes midnight and then December thirty first.
Yes, sir.
Do we do that? Mr. Anything else, Aaron, and you, Jay?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, um, but I did want to. Preferably economic development, Rod and Ryder and his team doing today. Uh, from him, uh Eastern wholesale fence, slightly growing county is a site of a new manufacturing and distribution facility there. Our Medford, New York company. They create a hundred and forty two jobs here. It's been seventy and a half million dollars in plant equipment. There'll be a uh mid-south industrial park, which is the old. Yeah, the old selling is fiber industry. So getting a new business back there to start breathing life and that is is uh is really good. And I tell you, Rod and his team is keeping the pressure on and keep doing a good job. And I want to publicly thank not only them, the Department of Commerce and Raleigh and the Charlotte Regional Alliance. Or the relationship that Rod and his team have built with those folks over the past few years is really strong. These folks are coming to us now with Providence and that's the way. There's nothing is designed to be. So thank you, Rod. Congratulations, Rod. So it's gonna be a hundred and twenty two million jobs. All right, we have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.